Okay folks, I've got four o'clock, so we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, before you get started, you see what they did there? They gave you a calendar where we don't have to turn pages on anything. Alright. One less duty for me.
Well, I only did that because they felt you were incompetent.
That's probably true. I don't know who that was. Let's try to impress you.
Alright, we have June 6 minutes to approve. July 6 minutes to approve.
I make a motion to approve minutes from July 6.
And the payroll amount of $186,396.86 approved.
I make a motion to approve payroll of the amount of $186,396.86.
All payers out. We need to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims that has payable report in that amount of $53,124.
I make a motion to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims in the amount of $53,124.
All payers out. Do we have any handout checks?
Yes, I do. We have MedAmerican elevator for $3,610.26. We've been paying this as approval for today, then we get a discount, I think over $100 some dollars. The other claims are for CASA. The CASA is training and travel for $32.35. There's also a CASA for training and travel for $95.73. First one was for Kerry Wheeler, the second one's for Caitlin Wills. Office supplies, $67.25. Caitlin Wills, another training travel, $14.99. Kerry Wheeler for her cellphone, $120.26. And Caitlin Wills for her telephone for $125.
So, $457.58.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve those as presented.
I'll second that.
All payers out. Okay, um, Kim Harris.
Hi, I'm Kim Harris, and I am from the office of the Attorney General. I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself, let you know some divisions that the office has that we're working on behalf of the insurance, the advisory commission. You know, everybody's favorite is unclaimed property and then consumer protection. Um, you know, the Attorney General, he believes in serving the state with the servant's heart, and that's our core foundation of our office. So, I just really appreciate you guys allowing me to be here today. I did bring some fun things from the office for you and some hundred day booklets and some parents' bill of rights that he just put out a couple of weeks ago. So, again, thank you so much, and I have put my cards in there too, so if you guys ever need me or, you know, need to get in touch with the Attorney General, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay, we appreciate you being here, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I worked with Todd many years ago when he was Secretary of State on recounts and stuff, so Bruce Hartman, his name, just tell Todd, I said, "He'll probably remember."
Okay, I will do that, yes.
Tell him to run for governor, too.
I've heard that about the last four meetings I've been to, so.
Alright, Katie.
Yes. Um, we put out bid specs on June 29, 2021. Nick has a copy and has reviewed them. We had some provisions in there, and I advertised twice. I'm only required to advertise once, but I did advertise twice in the county newspaper, and we got one bid from Tyler Technology, which is sealed. Do you want me to open it, or do you want to open it?
So, did the time go separate, it's passed?
It is. At 3:00 today was the last time.
Should've brought my pocket knife.
There's a little pull tab on there somewhere.
They take it open.
Did they?
Shoot it, Jason, I'll throw it in.
Right there.
I think my statue technically has to open it.
There you go, I didn't know what the, I couldn't remember. We only do this once every four years, and I can never remember.
One of my few job requirements. That would change the calendar.
And there should be three copies in there.
Yep. I think I'm just required to open it, I don't think I have to do anything else with it.
I do have Kathy Gould with Tyler Technologies here, she's my rep, if you have any questions. Luckily, for Nick, there is a contract that has to be used pursuant to the DLGF, so everybody has to use this same contract. So, and they did use it, I was trying to find where the numbers were. Kathy, you can probably help me out better than I can do this.
You still want Todd to look it over? It's the only bid we got, but that makes sense.
Be good to know it.
You just want to look it over and then get back with us?
I just said it for the next hearing.
For the next meeting?
Yeah, and I can borrow a copy for two weeks.
I don't know, you're pretty shady.
It's true.
Um, yes, you can have a copy. I was just going to let them know what it's, how much the amount was, if I can find it here.
I know, right?
I know. I'm not shady today, just other bits.
Oh, just, well, you know, you're dressed up today, you're not shady today. I never dress up, so I'm always shady.
In my official capacity, I'm not shady.
I know, it's in there somewhere. But, here. There you go. There's, there's your copy, and I'll keep the other two copies with me, and then we'll come to the next meeting.
And what would be the occurrence if we found this to be unsatisfactory? Do we have to back out of this again, or how do we do that?
We could put it out for bid again. I doubt that we're going to get anybody else, but there's not very many that do it in this part of the state. It's kind of, Lexor, if you'll remember four years ago, Lexor put a bid in, and they were lower than Tyler Technologies.
These contracts come out of your budget, right?
Yes, out of reassessment.
And we never have either, because I'm aware, any office that we've ever conflicted with an office holder, if that's out of their budget, what they decided to do, so we'll come back with your recommendation. We'll just have Nick look at it.
Sure, absolutely.
We are a given agency, we are, so.
Oh, absolutely.
We're not going to challenge anything on it unless there's some legal.
Yeah, if you find something legal, let us know, they can redo the bid and resend it.
As far as where we start, that's your office, you do what you need to do, spend your mess.
Alright, well, I will take these back, and I will come back to your next meeting, and.
Before you sit down, Don, speaking of your office, spend your own money out of your. Come on up there, have a seat there. Don's here to talk about, hey, you gotta, you know, to spend money. I speak with a shredder company, they come set up, and often times, Don will be stuck with unlocking hundreds of boxes that he was on that day or days to get them to the shredder. We have really unknown pounds of weight up in the attic where these things are stored, and so he has researched the possibility of getting our own shredder, so they can be shredded in a timely manner. Now, obviously, there are time periods that some things have to be held before they can be shredded, but we have a committee that does that kind of thing. We meet on a regular basis, and maybe that can be more frequently if we have our own shredder to take care of it. There's what we got. Go ahead, Don, I'll let you tell us numbers and what you're looking at.
It's a heavy-duty commercial shredder. It weighs about 1,008 pounds, 3 horsepower motor, belt fed. It'll take debris, you just lay it on the belt, takes it right in, exposes of it, puts it in a bag, and it carries area underneath. The price list is there. The bottom line, there's a $500 fee there, over and above, to bring in a technician once we get it wired up, set up, ready to go, to teach us how to operate it. However, I told the council I didn't see that was necessary, so we can drop a $500 off of there. Brings the price from about $10,040, I think it was, down to $9,000 and something, which would help a little bit. This thing will have to come in on a box truck with a lift gate. I'll have to figure out a forklift or something to get it off the pallet. We can get it up to the handicap ramp on each side, take it right in through the handicap ramp into the basement where I'm going to set it, which is right across from the elevator. Three-phase wiring for the 3-horsepower motor, 220. Panels are available in the hallway nearby, right there across from it. Little sink there in the hallway, ready for that, to run the cable over, get it wired up, and ready to go. After that, I want to encase it in its own little house, to make it tamper-proof for public. Even though it's got an on-and-off key, we can take out of it, it won't operate without the key, which is a safety feature. But I'd still like to enclose it, just to keep anybody messing around with it.
Another question I have is on the, not having the guy come to show up. I suspect it's more than just putting it there and pushing a button. Do you really think we don't need to have a?
Well, it's all programmable, if you read the literature on it, it's pretty well self-explanatory. LED panel control board tells you exactly what it's doing, how it's doing it, the whole nine yards. Even if it overloads, it's going to show on the graph at the top on the LED readout, if it overloads or you try to overload it, it's going to shut itself down, stop the belt feed, and let it catch up. If you have a jam or anything, you can reverse it, clear the jam, and pick it up and go again. It's pretty much foolproof as far as the want-out rate on operation.
You're the same age, and, well, actually, you're older than I am, you're too much.
Yeah, I am, Jim, you keep hitting me in the head.
Is anybody hear that okay, that Don's a little older than I am?
Yeah, that's true, I'm older, Jim.
So, we are both of the, by God, I don't need to read no owner's manual, just pull the lever and fire it up. I wonder if we, if that's, if we would get benefit out of having the guy come. I'm sure he spent $10,000 bucks on something and find out that we didn't know something we shouldn't know. I understand it's self-explanatory, but I've broken things before that I thought were self-explanatory.
What are your thoughts on asking for directions, then?
I'm good with that, I am good with that, I'll ask them. So, I'm not bad on that, it's just the other stuff. It's the only fault that I have, but it's one that.
Oh, come on.
Would you be the only one using this, or will there be others?
Just be K and I. K and I, the game plan is to, if I'm approved to purchase through you people, is to get small plastic bins put in one in each office, that's going to be their shredder container. Once it's full, they give us a call, we go up and get it, bring it down, discard it, take bin back up to them.
And the council has approved.
Just keep it rotating.
Yeah, it's actually come out of the budget, but if you run short of the budget, they understand you may need to reappropriate some or additional.
I just think this will save a lot in the future. I had my trailer, 8x12 trailer, stacked two rows high for the last shredder truck that was over here. Prosecutor had, I don't know how many contained, it was stacked out in the front yard. We took 20 out of here for shredding, that Chris had underneath there. It's just a lot of boxes all at once to try to get everything put together and get it to the shredder truck and beat the range.
Different offices have different lengths of time they have to get perks off, I don't know how many years, some things, years. Sheriff, how long you got to keep stuff?
Yeah, even the sheriff has to keep items for a certain length of time. But this, I think this will still alleviate a lot of weight and pressure in that attic, if we can just keep things coming.
I have no problem with you purchasing, I'll let you argue with Jim about the training part of it. I don't care one way or the other, if he's comfortable with it.
Well, if he's comfortable with that, we'll go with that. I mean, it's just another $500.
I, yeah, I think we probably ought to have somebody come in, and again, you don't want to plug it in and burn it up right off the bat without.
And I know it'd be you and Kay getting trained, but probably I would have had Randy Cleaver there, or YG there, or whatever.
Yeah, I was wondering about the guy that's doing our, you know, that was just here a couple of weeks ago that had all the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Matt's back.
Sketchy old guy.
I guess it's one good thing if you're going to do the training, you might as well have anybody there that's going to need to use it.
Well, Matt would put that in like the manual for the, for sure, so they would know how to run.
Don's got a good relationship with him, too, Don's come through this stuff. And speaking of that, Matt knows there's a lot of things, and as I said, we just don't have time to do all the things, but he just, he got him worked out for to do what needs to be done. Maybe we can hire services to come in, change some of those filters, do some of those things. That we just got to talk about and figure out what we do.
It'd also help you if Don shreds his finger on accident, if you had him professionally trained. Not that we want you to shred your finger.
Well, and at his advanced age, he could go down and he won't, you know, and we got to.
Heard that about that age group.
Aren't you glad you gave him the day, Doc?
I'm not going to make it to return it.
Oh, yeah, we're both right there, I understand as well. So, have you ever bought a thing, you want to sit down and read the owner manual before you fire it up? I never have.
I've done a lot of things over the years, I just throw it aside and do what I need to do.
I know. So, I'm okay with that, if Bruce is okay, if you're okay with this, let's go ahead and have that $500. I'll just feel better to know that they came to show us, we couldn't say that, well, we didn't know this or something.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that accidents won't happen anyway, or legal will fail in a way. At least they can't come back and say, "Well, you didn't have the guy come in and show you." If you'd had that, then we would recover it later. Yeah, that's what I mean, so. They can't come in and say, "Well, you didn't take the training, so it's not our responsibility to fix it this time."
Works for me.
We've never been able to tell them what to do, so I'll plan to assert that now, but I think that might be good for us more if I have that.
Well, you're still not, you're just advising me.
Yeah, that's right.
Probably the right direction, how's that?
I don't know about the right direction, but we're.
Come on, you either want the guy or you don't.
So, I would suggest that we do that, so.
Okay, yeah, I don't have a problem.
Approve the shredder?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the shredder with the train, and I'll second that.
Okay, all payers out. There you go.
Okay.
You can do it.
Want to sign me off?
Yep.
Please.
I can do that. Do you both copy the same thing?
Yes.
You want two copies, I don't want you to sign both copies?
You can just sign one if you want to, I just made two to have an extra, in case you messed up or something.
Well, the chances of that, and I'm guessing I'm the customer, so I will put, I'll put Park County on it, the customer signature, I'll put mine, would that work for you?
Park County, you know, it's the government, it's probably, we go. That's also GSA government buy too, on that pricing, so that helps us a little bit.
Well, I appreciate you looking into it. Alright, so if you're ever looking in for a place to come and be, you can just stop in anytime.
I'll do it, I'll do it, I know you're good at it.
Yeah, we can.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Don, appreciate it.
Everybody have a good evening.
Oh, Don, as long as you're here, you guys haven't gotten it?
Yeah.
Don and I met the other day, I talked about the drainage around courthouse, and what needs to be done, what doesn't need to be done. He found, actually, the, he had for a few years, that Karen had them up in the plaid office, the original drawings, the original blueprints, and they were in a rolled-up, of course, in a container, up so tall. And I like to have those preserved. I talked to Bill Wolf, the artist Bill Wolf, if you don't know, talking about down at Tarhope, and he suggested getting those restored. They are a little water stained from, who knows, but they're 150 years old, so that they're even readable, it's amazing to me. So, Don had those out, we're looking in for the drainage, because we're going to have to address the drainage issue at some point. Even on the drawings, there's some drainage, perimeter drainage that we can't see that actually even goes anywhere, so we're not sure where that might.
Well, I kind of think, if I can butt in there for a second, I kind of think the four-inch perimeter that we see on there initially drained the basement entrance doors.
Okay.
And over the years, that has been changed over, they drain to the curb face of the street now.
Okay.
So, they ran a different line, probably isolated that four inch off, that perimeter. Because that's the only thing I can come up with, it doesn't show an exit line anywhere off of that four inch. The eight inch, the eight inch we're going to talk about, has an exit line going to the tank, used to be out in the southeast corner yard over here.
There is a, like a sister, big tank on the, on southeast corner, that was filled in some years ago. We thought it wasn't doing anything, now it's maybe it was doing, doing something. We put our heads together, the best way to figure is, it was probably a holding, holding tank when it was built, because the streets were all dirt at the time, and you wouldn't want all that water coming down that hill on the streets to get it voided. So, by going into that tank, then it could go out slower, go wherever quick down.
See its way out.
Yeah, out, on the way out. So, we're probably going to have to meet with town and get permission to either attach to a storm sewer or put it out on the street. We're not creating more water course, it's going to be the same amount of water going through the streets, it's how it's going to get there, and figure out how to do that. Hopefully, that's going to be a consideration when we begin to spend or assign the appropriate money from the 3.8 million that we have, because it's going to be an issue ongoing. Right now, the north side is plugged, they tried to run the cameras through that, it's plugged all the way. To me, there's no reason to try to repair a 150-year-old clay pipe. To me, just bypass and put PVC down beside it and make new patches. But if you're doing that, then you may as well look at doing a whole perimeter drain. We still have drainage issues coming into the courthouse on the northwest corner. We've had a couple of engineers look at what to do with that. My preference, I just think, I just think they're perimeter draining around, like your houses would take care of that issue. There is not one there now. One engineer, which is amazing, the one engineering company suggested just let it go ahead and run into the basement of the courthouse, put a sump pump down there and pump it out. This is an engineering firm, I'm saying this, I don't think that's probably a good way to do it.
See why, I don't read directions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're not paid for with that traffic, we are, and so, I just want you to be aware that we're probably going to need to look at that and address that issue coming up. But what I borrowed this up for is, those plans need to be restored and preserved. Bill Wolf is doing research on it, to see who does that. There's a place in Chicago that does that kind of work, but he said it's pretty expensive. Didn't really know what pretty expensive was, but I think we have these jewels, these original blueprints, 1970, that we need to preserve, so if it's okay with you guys, I'll pursue, try to find out avenues of how we can do that, as long as you think it's worth, worth trying to save. So, just, I asked Don to keep us in that rolled-up pace, keep him out of, keep him out of light as best we can, the lights if they get in.
Yeah, I still got him out in my shop. Todd Crane came up, I called him the other day, he met with me out there. He got through three different suggestions, and one being, if we can salvage the eight inch. He thinks it's probably just clogged up along that north side there somewhere. So, his idea, one would be, start the southwest corner, go down, find it, tap into it, see what it looks like at that point. That's the furthest point from the beginning point, and over by the north steps, which is where it begins. It's actually a split system. If you go to the north steps, it runs from the west side of the north steps around to the tank. East side of the west of the north steps, it's perimeter here. The east side I've seen opened up already. When we remanufactured the handicap ramp with George Cobb a few years ago, he broke into that eight inch accidentally. So, we put a piece of green PVC in there to replace the tile. It was cleaner, I mean, that thing was clean.
And it works about that way, because actually, the north side was the back side.
Yeah, the north side, yeah, the north side's the back side of the facility when it was originally built. His idea might be to come over here, dig down, find it, see what it looks like, get a camera there. If it's good, go up to the northwest corner, go down on it, and come back to the beginning point at the downspout. Save a lot of dollars if we don't have to run a new line, if the eight inch is still in good shape. And if it looks like it did on the east side, it looked like they're brand new. I mean, he also suggested, once we get to it, we get a jet truck in there, get the town to come up with their jet truck. I pressure that, it probably will just clean itself after that, get the debris broke loose. I think it's full of tree roots, most trees in that northwest corner, because it's not that deep. It's probably four foot or less on the depth. I think those tree roots over the years have gone down in there and found a belt on the tile.
And water.
They'll go right to that water. So, it's a guessing game, dig a couple of small holes with a, with a small trencher, or a small escalator, knock a hole in the top of one of them and see what it looks like, and go to the northwest corner and do the same thing.
I'm agree, are you guys okay with that? Just do the, just do the exploratory as you all have got.
Because it might be, if they're all in that good shape, except for one section, it might be that we should replace one section.
See, he's thinking it's that north, north round.
The envy on those documents, though, is the light, that's, that's the envy, especially neon lights. They just suck it right out of it, so if you can cover those up and hang on to those.
Yeah.
Bill Wolf will get back with me, we'll figure out where we can take those, at least get digitized, get pictured and digitized. Hopefully, we can restore it, get the water, water staining out of it.
It'd be well worth it.
Yeah, we'd be.
That's well worth it.
And we keep them someplace, maybe even display them someplace, so.
It shows a metal structure from the ground up, one of the pages does. They're just amazing, they're just amazing. I called Jeff Esslinger this morning to see if he'd come up, and he got tied up evidently, and didn't make it, so I'll save it then, to see about tying on to the southeast storm drain over here, if that's permissible. Then we got to find out what size that storm drain is, to make sure it's going to handle what we're going to give to it. Okay, so, I got a lot of things in the mill as far as this and that, and.
And Don might call.
Trying to find out what to do with it.
Just make sure the camera's in, I'm sure it will, but a lot of people think that you're going to have too much water coming in to do that, but all that water's running to this stream anyway. It's all come down that hill, running the street someplace anyway, so we're not creating any more, it's just how's the best way to handle it, get it passed.
They're getting ready to rebuild the infrastructure on South Market, including sewers and storm drains and things, so it might be something to think about there, too.
Yeah, I think you're even coming right at the edge of our, of our, of the county property that are on Market Street.
It kind, it looks like it.
That'd be the time to make the, if they're okay to, so we're good to get in the loop, so we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, while we're talking, the northeast, northwest corner, down by the monument, there's another underground tank. But I don't know what feeds it, and I don't know where it goes, exits out of it. It's got water in it. Years ago, right after I hired in, I dug it, the lid opened, opened it up, had a look. If I remember right, because I'm getting old, I think it's a modern-day block-laid-up tank, the way the old one over here is all manufactured brick and mortar and all that, built up with a dome top on it, that's what it has.
You can see that there's some some, just like the brass bags on top of it.
But I don't know what, what's feeding that tank down there. It's full, and there's got to be an overflow off of it, or it'd be running over, blowing the lid off.
And it's like anything, the last 150 years, or maybe repairs made, lines are under, nobody's written down where those are, where they came from.
I'm going to play with some dye, but there again, I want to get with Jeff Esslinger and let him know I'm going to play with some dye, so people go spastic, they see it running out on the street, because it's a green fluorescent water. People are going to be calling the fire department, the ambulance service, and the sheriff's department, and everybody else.
Alright, we'll try not to be disruptive, okay?
I'm still calling, I'm just saying.
Anyway, we're working.
I appreciate it, Don, if you need to holler.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, guys. I just had Don something to get there while he was here. On the public agenda is Todd Payne. Todd Payne is the gentleman who has bought most of the available facilities in Mansfield, and he's looking to make that more of a year-round entity down there. I've met with him a number of times, and we've looked at a number of things. There's two items really that need to decide on. There's a road, it's 650, I think, that is just south of Mansfield, that runs into 775 over to Martin Street. You know where I'm talking about? And that road is just beaten up, it's been beaten up every year, but it's only used at the bridge festival, right? And so, I talked to Randy, the plans were to grind that back up in the Derby down. Todd was hoping to have that pay for chip sealed, but we can't justify me, we justify pay for that, because it's only used one. you justify pay for that, cause it's only used one, one time a year, but you have so many other fees all around the county. So we are gonna chip seal that in Durver, because Durver is proving to be a much better product than gravel or white rock, either one. However, you can't chip seal over Durver. So if Todd is wanting to want that chip sealed, like we've done for many other homeowners, they just pay for the material. The county pays, goes ahead and does the work, but they pay for the different material. But if we're gonna chip seal, then instead of put Durver down, we need to put white rock down so we can chip seal over that. So he's in the process now of trying to make that decision whether to do that or not. So, um, Randy hopes to have that done by Bridge Festival, cause it is rough, like so many roads, we have patch on top of patches, it's just humps and, and it's really, really rough. But hopefully, at the very least, by Bridge Festival, it would be ground up. The only question then is, do we put down Durver or do we put down white rock? And that will depend upon whether Todd decides to, to pay for the chip, to chip seal. That's, probably the ten thousand range, what Randy was guessing. It's, it's right at six inches from the wild all the way to Martin Street. But we probably wouldn't do anything to seven seventy-five, but that's paper all the way through already. So it's just got some holes and patches on there. So that was one issue. The other issue, and I know Laura's with us and this, and talk about this, the struggle with this, as we are, we have. It's so stressful, it's a stressful climate, at Bridge Festival climate, you know, when people coming in at the last minute. And I know full well, as we've all talked, that they know they're coming to the festival, they ought to be able to get online, get that T M L, get that taken care of, but it just doesn't happen for everybody. I know there are other festivals that I have been to and I have checked on, this was even years ago, back when we were looking, having wine tasting first come to the festival. Many festivals who charge those permits allow, uh, the, the people who buy block areas to issue those permits themselves, and then at the end of the festival, they, they settle up. I don't have a problem, but I can't speak for Laura, uh, she does the work, but I, I don't have a problem with, even if we create a different number set with an imple from Mansfield or whatever. And I told Todd, we gotta be careful about this because we don't wanna do this for every entity in, in the county, but we can't treat you special, we can't make special things for you. But if it would make ease on the auditor's office to not have to have someone down there selling prior to the Cover Bridge Festival, he's willing to come in and if he needs to pay from up front, pay from up front, then you reimburse whatever is left over at the end. But I don't know, how many do you think vendors are down there? Five hundred vendors down in Mansfield?
Probably a little more than that.
Okay.
I'd have to go look at the T M L spreadsheet to find out.
I think there was five, six here, five eighty last year.
So if he came in and he had eight hundreds, or whatever number, seven fifty, whatever number is of T M Ls that go with him, and they were all numbered, and we had a contract with them that he's obligated to those, and if he loses those seven fifty, I don't care if you sold two hundred of them, you gotta pay for all seven hundred and fifty of them. And we had a contract to show that he is responsible for paying for those. Uh, I'm okay with that. But I don't know if you guys are okay with that, or Nick's okay with that. To have that rushed at the end of the day, having him to hit the auditor's office like they do, and, and it doesn't make any difference. People are gonna come in and they're gonna get that. And they, they say they're gonna sell this product, but you know they're gonna sell whatever they sell when they get there anyway. So even though the auditor has seen it, and the order is approved, and that's what they're gonna sell, until you hit, I can't even tell you every time they've gone or I've gone to places where they set up for business, and they're not selling. They sold whatever they had. We even get people who try to do the, the, not pay that hundred dollars, the ten dollars a day, that ten dollars a day is gonna kill them, they can't, they can't pay that ten dollars a day. So they try to get a, um, what, what do you call it, when you don't pay the.
Handmade exemption?
Exemption. They try to get the exemptions with handmade, so they'll show you something that, hey, yeah, that's good, so they give these, and then they go, then they're selling the other stuff too, so. We look, they're trying to get that handmade exemption to go away, which would affect my business as well. I'm motivated, but there's no place to do that. I've tried before. I like to see that go away, but the way the legislation, the legislature had wrote the legislation, it can't go away unless we have new legislation, so we'll have to address that at some other point. So what I'm gonna do is, what do you think about printing a separate set of T M Ls for Mansfield? If Bridgette was one big owner and everybody willing, if Bridgette might be fine with that too, but you, but you're not. You got, most people have three or four on the, I mean, Mike has come in, I don't know, Andy has come in, but.
Actually, probably the biggest owner is, was Rob Jones, but now it's.
So it's somebody.
New kids now, come up, danger.
So I'm okay with that kind of thing, so long as we've got a contract with them, that they're responsible for those that we've given them, they have to pay for those?
Yeah, so gonna take into consideration, we also have the veterans exemption.
Yes, we do.
So we have to have a copy of their veterans thing.
And we can require them to do that. And we could, we could figure that out and, and tell them how that's gotta be, that's gotta be attached to it, it's gotta be seen.
So what do you do about the handmade? Just not give him the handmade, is a handmade, or somebody have to come to the auditor's office and prove it?
And I'm okay, I'm okay with that, that's, if that's.
That's gonna be the best way to do it.
That'd be fine with that? I didn't even know how many.
And I thought it's gonna end up handmade if you don't.
Yeah.
Usually on a Thursday, we usually set up, uh, Mansfield and Bridgette to sell the T M Ls on a Thursday before the Cover Bridge Festival, or Bridgette and Mansfield.
And if you're okay with that, I, 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 I mean, I'm fine with that. But I'm just trying to get, get the load off of you by having them available. And that way then in the future, next year, so that he can conclude that price for the T M L on his feet when he charges them. And that way he knows, his biggest fear is what we did, um, before about now, the homeowners are responsible, five hundred, five hundred, he likes to set up without a T M L, that's the biggest concern. He's gonna have a mess down there this first year because the people who own Hilltop just went bankrupt. And they had already accepted, uh, deposits from a lot of vendors. And of course, he's not responsible for those. He has no record of who's paid what to anybody. They're gonna come and they're gonna say, well, they paid the last year, this guy, and, and he's gonna try to work with them, that they give, pay some part of it, but they'll promise they'll come back next year, then he'll work with them. But he's gonna have a whole lot of people showing up. So he's worried about them just setting up on their own without his permission and not having a T M L. He'll want to find five hundred bucks apiece for them, so. I think, I think from talking with him, that he intends to try to do things the right way. So maybe we need to, need to give him, give him a chance to work with them, try to get this figured out. If that, if that would work, where you would never have to deal with a T M L or that, with a Mansfield T M L again, that that would be taken care of as part of their purchase. But I suspect before long, he's gonna own all the venues in Mansfield.
Then that'd be great.
And if it doesn't work out, first year, we don't do it again. We just say, I say, I don't do it anymore, you gotta come to courthouse, I say.
I'd just say that, like he said, if they want the exemption, whether it be handmade or veteran or whatever, it has to be in person.
I'm fine with that.
That solves your exemption issue then, and.
Yeah.
So they have an option, either come in person or pay for the regular T M L.
What's your actual thoughts on setting up down there? I mean, it's, this has more to do with you than it does us.
Well, I kinda prefer that we set up on that Thursday to make sure that we do collect it. That's what we normally do, and there is so an article on department revenue that I found too. That states that Park County is the only one in, in the state for the T M Ls for that vendor collection. It's on the Park County website too.
That was fast for us, yeah.
Right.
I don't care. If you won't continue to do it like it is, I have no problem with that.
I kinda like to table this for the next meeting.
Well.
He's supposed to be here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, he's not, because I talked to him before, I said I could carry that message, uh, message for him. I talked to him again today, in fact. See, I, I assume we pick it down the road, see if I can on the road, you know, I think we need to decide whether we try it that way or not. And I'd be okay with any, any large vendor who rents space to a lot of people. If they wanna come and buy those in their closing area.
I, I guess the, the only negative I could see is people are gonna argue enforcement's a problem then, but it's really not, because you still have the T M L, you're still bound by the T M L.
And they're still gonna go inspect and see if people have their T M Ls.
So it doesn't change enforcement for us at all.
No.
You know?
The only thing it stops is them having to come by the hundreds to the courthouse and get them, when you can pass them up, when they set up, when they come to pay their fees and set up, you can get it then. And in future years, you can charge them when they first, they'll make their commitment, make their deposit, you can get that T M L deposit, then so he knows.
That'd be the best practice to.
That's right, yeah.
So deciding the auditor's still gonna have to go out and do the inspection?
Oh, sure, he always do that. Yeah, that would change that. He's just, he is, he's just selling the T M L that's on their, on their wall, and they put up, they got one.
If we still have to go out and do the inspection, then I think we ought to revert back to, to we doing the setup on Thursday, and they should all show up there on that Thursday.
What, what do inspections have to do with them in that way?
Because if, why should we let them go ahead and take the license and everything? And, and if we're still have to go out there and do the inspection, if they're going to be doing all that, then why would we even go out there and do any inspection?
But you're gonna do the inspections either, either way, right? Whether you sell a T M L or what they sell.
It doesn't matter who sells. We're still inspecting the auditor's office to make sure everybody has a T M L. Okay? Now, so you're still gonna do inspections, whether Todd sells the permits or you sell the permits.
Okay.
So that really, they're, like Jim said, sort of two different completely issues. Will Todd, if we give him a stack of a hundred T M Ls, will he pay for a hundred upfront?
He would.
Or will he pay at the end of the fest? Well, my least concern is, what if Todd bellies up, he sold five hundred T M Ls, and he doesn't pay us? I mean, sue him, I understand that.
He needs to pay in advance, I'd be adamantly against that. If he doesn't pay in advance, I'd be.
So what he'll do is Todd will come in and say, Laura, I want five hundred permits. He'll pay you, what is that?
Fifty thousand dollars.
He'll give you a check for fifty thousand dollars. He'll take this permits, he'll sell them, and then at the end of the festival, he'll say he sold.
Four hundred, yeah.
And he brings you back two hundred permits unsold. You'll refund him then.
Right.
We, two hundred times a hundred dollars, which would be twenty thousand dollars. In Laura's defense, if he does not pull them through and have all that information and record to her, she don't even know for sure where to find these people, go inspect or anything else, and verify she's got it. And another thing, I feel the same way. I think this should be up to her, just like it's up to Katie, how she runs her office, not up to Todd. I think it should be up to Laura. I'm gonna try to tell her, if she wants to go out there and has to go out there and set up any of that, I'm gonna tell her she can't.
Well, she'd go out and sell it. I, I don't think that has any, any bearing on whether Todd has mixed it available for his vendor, because she's so set up to sell it to the people that aren't on Todd's property.
How, how, how fast is he gonna be at getting records and information to her, so when she does have to go verify?
Well, they'll have it on the wall. When they go to their booth, go to their booth, you see their own wall or it's not. So I would say that would be any difference on, on any, on any inspection.
And I have to have everything broken down, because I have to do a report on, there's like four different funds that that money goes into. There's like a hundred dollar goes into one fund, uh, the twenty dollars, the late fee.
Yeah, yeah. But that's all, that's all on the, on the form that he fills out. It's all there, of the fee and the, if there is a late fee, which there shouldn't be in this case, but that twenty dollar non-resident.
There is a late fee. If he's selling them, then there is a fifty dollar late fee.
But you've always got down.
Yeah.
With him. Friday, Saturday, it's already started going and.
Yep.
I don't know. With you, it's better. You, I mean, you're going out, you're not looking for a particular person.
Yeah, we're looking for the, make sure a different pass the booth, make sure they've got there.
You don't really, you don't really need paperwork that says booth A is Bruce Hartman, he's selling whatever. Aren't you just going, walking around, looking to see the, the space, the booth, the tent, whatever, has the T M L hanging there? Is that all you're doing anyway?
And then, when they don't have one, then we get in the application.
Right, yeah, they have, they have to. But I, what I'm trying to get at, I'm trying to understand the matching up of the paperwork versus the inspection, and I don't see that they go hand in hand.
Couldn't that late fee cause an issue if this guy has a stack of these permits and he's able to charge the late fee and perhaps pocket it and report to you guys? I would just say that if he's handing them out, they are late fee. Like, he can't do the.
When is the last day before late fee?
September thirtieth.
Yeah, so again, they put out the.
Right, it's just added on as a late fee, and he can prepay it also. So instead of fifty, it'd be whatever that number is, yeah.
Hundred seventy actually, pretty.
Right.
None, none kind of.
Does any of this personal information these people fill out on this T M L affect the sheriff's department for the knockoff stuff they end up with about every year and the illegal stuff?
What was your question?
Do you use any of that information that they fill out the T M Ls with to track them down?
We have the forward, but I don't know if it's that, how important it is.
They probably don't write on there that they're selling knockoff stuff.
Without, I'm saying, they, if they put the information on who they are or where they're from, and then they grab the knockout stuff.
They, they, but they do that anyway. They'll do that kind of the auditor's office to get permits. They're, they're the same. Oh, I know, I know, I mean, all those people have set up their T M Ls, then they start to get the stuff.
Well, generally, if you catch them, you're gonna gather the information at that point anyway. It's just the ones you wouldn't catch that might leave a T M L.
Yeah, the person that got it may not be involved or there directly.
My, I guess my suggestion, we just, maybe we should just try it for a year, see how this, if it goes bad, then it goes bad, we don't do any more.
And if you do do it, make it abundantly clear to them that, look, if this doesn't go the way we want it to, it's over.
Yeah. And this is really the first time I've had the mentality myself, we wanted to work with other vendors, but I really have confidence that he's trying to turn it around. We've agreed on some things, he needs to clean up there in Mansfield, that, that script coming off fifty-nine there, what it looks like Hurricane went through there, the border of Euphoria goes, and Bristow Shacks hanging there, that's all of them go.
But I, I think the only way you can do it is to go ahead and charge the late fee ahead of time. But I, I think the only way you can do it is to go ahead and charge the late fee ahead of time. He just prepays in and it's on him to collect.
I agree.
If he doesn't pay, he loses.
Which one, he had to pay for that. And if he doesn't wanna do that, then that's fine. But he, but he made it stated that he would, so...
It's a lot of money.
If he's trying to do it for all the people that are on his property, he may, he may let them go ahead and get their own T M Ls and then just have a stack for those that are late. Cause that's what he was, at least what I understand is concerned with those late people.
We can just come in and move in, erase that up.
He may, he may say seventy-five percent of my people, they'll go ahead and get theirs ahead. And then I'm only gonna have enough T M Ls for
It's a weird thing. It's, it's only the late ones.
Yeah, those, those, those that pop in on the last day or whatever. Or he may say, you know, I wanna control my whole property. I have no potential of getting by five hundred dollars per day. And so I wanna control the whole thing, so I'm not gonna let Jim Mees go get his own T M L and set up on my property. He's gonna buy from me and not from...
He's gonna set their body.
I don't know how exactly he wants to do it. So if he wants to control everything, if he sells all the five hundred maybe, that's a lot of money he's gonna have to pay.
But you should do that already by renting the space outside.
But the only way, the only way I'm okay with it as far as the legal advice is if he pays everything upfront. Because we're not gonna be able to collect down the road. You know, they could file bankruptcy, he could leave the state, he could do...
Oh, he'll understand that.
And that's just how it has to be if you're gonna entertain that.
He obligated the seller to the same price the county sold it.
Yes.
He has to be...
And the accountability would be you and him, where you'll have to reconcile sold versus unsold, and you'll have to reimburse.
I just hate to give him what he doesn't sell. I hate to interfere with your continuity of numbers on those. So like one through five hundred, if you're gonna track who's got watch one. So if he takes two hundred out of the middle, then you got this gap when your numbers of ones that were sold and not sold. So if we created a different T M L, different, different numbering system, like an M one or an M two, three, four, five, whatever it is up there, or different colored paper.
Or maybe you don't give him his until whatever time she stops selling them. And then you just use that last number.
She'll still have, yeah, that's, she'll still, there's not one his before that Thursday, because if people come in, we can set up.
That's true.
And she's gonna be selling right up till the festival starts, people come in and buy them that day.
So is he going to give us like by half, five hundred of them? Is he gonna pay the full five hundred of them?
That'd be a requirement.
Yeah, if he's got the first two hundred, that's all he, what he pays for is all.
Pays for them.
That's it.
Plus, Jim said the one seventy, which includes the late fee.
Yeah, the one hundred dollars.
If he sells one that doesn't have a little T M L, then he's going to have to pay the late fee upfront.
You're not willing to sell.
I'll reimburse him later.
And if people don't wanna pay that late fee, they'd be less than worth it then. They can go online before September, they're even buying their own, have it taken care of. You won't have to give that. So likely an opportunity to educate them and get them to do it the right way as well. You know, the vast majority of people who do these festivals are, are good, upstanding people, but there is a percentage. As we all know, they're just trying to find ways to get around every dime they possibly can. This might put an end to that.
Well, we can try.
We label it, have the ability to enter into a contract with Todd to take all those duties.
If the auditor is on board for it, she can either get in and do it. I mean, if she's objecting to it, I think we're gonna have to look at it and see whether her objection...
I doubt the law says the auditor or does it mean...
No, you're probably saying auditor shall.
So auditor shall. I'm just talking, I'm talking about the statute.
Don't call the statute real quick.
The statute says the auditor shall issue T M Ls.
Actually says maybe, that caused a problem with wine testing years ago. I called the guy.
It said, probably doesn't say the auditor or does it mean?
I called the guy from, uh, from Barnes and Thornburg when he came up. And because I thought that if they've had all the requirements, then the auditor would have to issue a T M L to the people from when you reach wine or you're about to do wine testing. And so I called him. They go, name you can talk to him. They go, name you remember. Anyway, Rick. And, yeah, and I said, Rick, so we got this ordinance, that, that this legislation, and it says that after they've done all these things, then the auditor may issue, he says, no, shall. I said, no, may. Says they may. He said, well, can't say may. So we looked it up. Yes, it says, the legislation says the auditor may issue a T M L. So...
But if she may not, if she...
Yeah, and I know did, but what's, well, all I'm just saying is, it says the auditor may issue. Doesn't say Todd may issue. So what I was asking him is, can we enter into a contract and give statutorily the duty of the auditor to somebody else?
Well, that's what he is selling for her. He's distributing. She's already sold to him.
My position on that, but I, I think we do need to research this issue more, but auditor is selling the T M L. She's selling them to him.
Yes, he's distributing.
Okay, that's what I'm just, I was just clarifying.
It might be something we wanna look at before we actually put it into action, I guess, is what I would say. That way I can have a chance to read the statute.
Are we comfortable unless, to tell them then that unless you find a legal reason, we can't do it that way, then we're okay with trying it? Is that right?
That's up to you.
Provided he understands he's gonna pay in full and then be reimbursed.
And there, there's gonna have to be a contract with him, I would say also, that dictates what he's gonna do and what he's responsible for, and we'll want to be very specific.
And I'd rather make that a personal contract rather than with his business contract.
Right.
With, with Todd paying personally.
He's guaranteed.
So if he bankrupts his business, he's still guaranteeing pay for that.
Yeah, cause that's the thing, is that these businesses...
They're gonna have to pay it anyway.
Right. I mean, that's, that's why I want to pay in full ahead of time. And that may be a deal breaker for him, though he may not. I mean, it's one thing to say, it's another thing to see the dollar amount in front of you. You know, if you're buying a hundred or two hundred or five hundred or...
And could he provide a bond for that, so we wouldn't have to pay it upfront? He could put a bond for that amount of money up.
He could, yeah. He'd have to talk to somebody on that as far as the bond, though.
Would we, would we be okay accepting a bond?
I'd rather pay in advance than have a bond. Cause then you run into the bankruptcy issue and that kinda stuff too.
Bond, bond would be affected by bankruptcy, would it?
Not him.
Yeah.
The, the company, the, whoever issues the bond.
Yeah. Oh, he's, that's gonna be a bankruptcy.
People get burnt by bankrupt a lot, like these vendors. It doesn't surprise me a bit that they're... I mean, that's gonna be hot water down there when they show up, but...
He's saying you might need somebody else in there.
I mean, our best position is he pays upfront.
Okay, I'll tell you that. If you're guys okay with that.
Cause then we don't have to worry about any ifs, ands, or buts. But I still wanna look at the statute though, but my position would be Laura is selling the T M L. She's selling them mass to him.
Yes.
And he's, he's not replacing her authority.
Laura, you still may have to set up on Thursday because everybody else, and Todd doesn't own one hundred percent.
That's right.
They're still going, they're still going to be, these people show up Thursday, they wanna set up. Probably this time over top. You're still probably gonna have to be there Thursday, but you're, for the work level, you're gonna have to do.
Sure, there's, there's gonna be some Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday, Thursday. Yeah, that's, that's part, that's Rockville office can't be that old. It just can't be that old.
So just know that, I think you're still gonna have to be down there. Of course, you're still gonna do the inspection. Really, this doesn't change anything. The only thing it changes is who's gonna give these people a piece of paper? Instead of you giving them a piece of paper, Todd's gonna give them a piece of paper because...
And it's a piece of paper that aren't paid for. You don't make these aren't paid.
It's, it's actually great for us because then we're not having to find them.
He's gonna pay the whole thing, so we're...
I have a meeting with the town that I have to be present for. Do you guys need anything else from me while I'm here? I don't have anything to present that I'm aware of.
You're gonna research that for us, well, hold off or vote on it.
Next meeting's fine. It won't take me long to, I just wanna put eyes on that statute, cause when we amended the T M L certificates, I, I did research all that. It's just I don't remember...
So you always have town meetings after every...
I do, yeah. But this particular one is a public...
Well, maybe just for the town, you didn't dress up forever.
This is a public meeting, though, that I have to be present for.
Did you have to have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Did you or did you not have?
I, I have, always have access on my email, so I can forward it to Cindy or somebody if you want me to.
That's all right.
But I did send a copy to the health department upon their request, and she's gonna review that.
Okay. Yeah, I have a couple things for you, but just call me later when you get...
Okay, I'll call you when I get it, yeah.
Are you familiar with the, the Rescue American Money, the three-pointing thing that we're gonna have to have, commissioners are gonna have to do? We're putting a group together to do that. It'd be us, it'd be at least a couple of the councils, it's gonna be Cindy, representing Kineop Development. You understand me on that too? We'll just be the steering committee. We won't be making decisions yet, but we're gonna see what areas we wanted to look into, and then we'll look at people in there.
It'd probably be good for me to be involved in that, I think. Not that I'm looking to assign myself work, but...
I'll let you know, we need to meet probably in a week or so, cause we have to have an initial plan
I may not be able to...
broad by the end of August.
Be at the initial meeting then. I'll shoot you, I'll shoot you a text later. But I'll call you Laura, if that's okay.
That's fine. It works.
All right.
Thanks, Megan.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, well, then, then we're open to that. We'll see how it goes. Nothing's gonna be...
I don't think we'll find anything.
If we find it, makes like... Okay. Easement for the town of Rockville. I guess we don't really need to do anything with that. The only question was, would authorize the auditor to input that, that money wherever she can input that money. So you guys okay with accepting that thousand dollar check and that on the road? What we're dealing with is a, an easement that the, the sewer project from the town of Rockville requires an easement at the front of the fairgrounds, which is county property, and the county has agreed a long time ago to provide that easement. But for the paper trail, the town is going to pay a thousand dollars for that easement. However, all of that's going to be paid out of TIF funds by the county TIF funds. And so it's really just a paper trail. It's all we're creating. So I make the motion that we authorize the auditor to, to receipt the thousand dollar check from the town of Rockville for the, for the easement. That be my motion?
I'll sign it.
I'll, yeah, okay. Sign both of these?
Well, she didn't...
I'm not really too sure because your same here is on the invoice that Brandy's got, your same here is all three people are on the...
But it's, I, I would say it would be you and, maybe you and me. Or at least you attest it anyway, cause it says, I'm sort of finding that above is true and correct, and we are receiving the check. So I can sign that we are.
But I say you can.
Okay. And we just voted on that, that we could, so I'm, I'll get signed in.
Hey Laura, that thing that Brandy said you originally had the wrong attachment.
Okay.
So just that voucher page, it's related to the county. The remaining documents that say Harland Properties is a separate thing, that should not have been sent to you.
Okay. Court claims. Next month ago, we have another court claim that's been filed against the Sheriff's Department. The individual, I think, was filing as well as the parents. Then we have another claim about a tree that fell, and it's here to look for the insurance company to deal with that. That's where ours is. Then we have the meeting agenda from the Law Bureau, where Harry's quarter commission. Now, old business. Well, you guys, you have a new business? Nope. Old business, I have a couple things. Lee Creed has finished the work on the bypass bridge with Rocky Ford Bridge. Looks pretty good. Again, Lee volunteered his time looking for a project. Someone posted on Facebook that they were really upset with the county because some old guy was down there working on the road. My yard law, they were talking about me passing roads, but I don't think I was passing that day, so another old guy down passing roads. And in reality, Lee has passed roads as I have for years, and you see the community project. He asked us if he could work on that bridge as a project for him. It's bigger than anything he's ever taken on before, so I checked with Randy. And he was fine with that, even though it was on the list to be repaired. He was fine with Lee doing it if he wanted to. And then I brought it to us, and we approved Lee working on that, so we approved that. So it wasn't just some old guy having to work down the road because nobody else was doing it. That's why he wanted to do it. He's got it completed. He did a good job. In fact, I got a text from him. I'll share with, gotta share with you here real quickly. This is a good guy. He's about my age, and he's just a good guy, and he sent me pictures. And I just wanted to know what he had to say about it. He's, he's a pretty arrogant and full of himself. I just wanted to know. He sent this, uh, oh, I'll find it here. Maybe it was a message instead of Facebook. Let me check that a little bit. So I just wanna make sure I get it right, cause he sent it and find the way. No, anyway, he said that the bridge was two thirds of the way done, and he was pretty confident that he probably could've got a second or third place before he shared, so... He wasn't bragging himself. It's, he did, did a good job. He was, oh, I appreciated the work on that. So if anyone tasted made about volunteering, as you might, he was certainly the one that offered to volunteer and did the work, and I, we, we appreciate him making that effort on our behalf. The other thing that I have, courthouse doors. We talked about courthouse doors before. Did you guys get a chance to look at it and decide if you wanted to go with the color they are? Do you wanna go with the dark that they are on the inside doors? What's your preference? Like the inside doors?
Okay, Buzz?
I'm not real good on picking colors. Every time I hear the white, it's something I can't uncover mine.
Do you guys have any preferences? Anybody have any preferences on?
Dark.
Like the inside doors?
That's why.
That'd be the whole entrance, above the glass, everything. Anybody else have a opinion on that? No? Okay. Well, if you do, let me know. And anybody, anybody watching this thing on John's blog there, feel free to contact us if you have your preference, but we're talking about, I have to choose. We're taking the, the outside doors back down to, to wood. And then we're gonna refinish them, and then protect them again. They get beaten up outside of course in the weather. And I think they're walnut doors, like the rest of the building, the rest of the building are. So our decision is, we're making is whether to go with the dark that matches the inside corridor doors to the offices, or even the more lighter beige, brown, whatever color you wanna call that, that is currently on them. The consensus seems to be to go to match the inside corridor doors, so that's what we will be looking at. We only have two people so far that have, that have considered bids on them, so we'll see what we come up with. The other thing we need to do with doors is the, yeah, the entrances. The county council has funded for, till this week, five days a week, having security down in the basement, coming through the basement doors. And Jason, I talked last week, I thought it was through July, but Jason was right. It was just due this week. And so the full five day a week security guard at the entrance door in the basement will cease. And if you go back to three days a week, and they will assume the position they had before on the first floor. Is that correct? Where you were before?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
That's right.
So without, without full-time security at that one basement door, people coming in, then is there a reason not to open up all the entrances as we had before? So that's what we need to decide. Don's not real comfortable with everybody coming through the basement and going up, going upstairs without somebody there. Although once they're past the security door and past his door, I mean, they're kind of on their own anyway till they get to the elevator.
I don't want to be in the basement. If we talked about that, and if Jason, if that crew's not gonna be down there, I don't think they'll be coming through the basement.
No, I think that door should be locked.
Well, has we opened, well, has Andy had access?
Yeah.
One on each side, east and west. But it would have to be specialties probably to go through that way.
But we, we don't wanna, don't advertise it as big.
Okay. You mind opening all four? Back up.
You know, like Nick said, there's not... I realize where you guys are at. You can basically see all four doors, but for security purposes, wouldn't it be a lot easier if there was just one door open?
Yes, yeah.
Security. Most courthouses only have one door.
I, I still prefer East to, East at one.
Yeah, I don't know.
I prefer all four.
I'm not apocalypsoic about that decision would be, but true security, you need one, you only need one entrance.
Is there any benefit to you having just one access, coming to one door instead of all four doors though? Cause you're in the middle, the middle of the foyer anyway, the middle of Hall B anyway.
Yeah, I mean, really, you need, most courthouses, if they have one entrance, you have metal detector.
And we don't have that.
And everything, so... You just try to read the person when they come in. That's about all you can do.
Yeah, and that's really, yeah, that person would go to do evil things anyway. That, that security guard's not gonna have much control over that, cause he's gonna deal with the security guard first and then go from there anyway. That's not good for you guys, but that's how I would do it, if I was gonna be that evil guy and do an evil thing.
Well, I guess it'd be nonchalant till they got to where they want it.
That's what I mean. I'd lock the door and carry on that way with you, have a conversation, deal with you, then go and do what I wanna do.
Right.
So I, I really don't have a dog in this hunt either. I don't care either way. I was fine with having one entrance as long as it was based, as long as we had a security guard on it. But if we're not gonna have a security guard, you're gonna be up in the corridor on the first floor anyway. I don't know that I see a benefit of having just one door open as opposed to all four doors open. Does anybody see a reason that one door open would be better than having all four doors open? The only one, the only time I know that makes a difference is when you get the sock and citizens, they, they wanna come in all four doors. It's probably be disruptive as they can, but that didn't happen often. And most people just simply wanna come in the courthouse and do their business and go back home.
Right.
So I'm okay, I'm okay with open all four and see how it goes. Bruce, are you okay with that? We're not gonna have a security guard.
I'm not opposed to it. I just, I work with Jason's stand.
You're okay with all four instead of just the one?
Yeah, that's what you guys wanna do, so...
Do you see a benefit of having just one access?
No, if we're going back to first floor, I'd say open all four as well.
Jim, as a side note, I did talk to the mail person today, cause I was down there when they came in. And I told him that was a possibility. People were gonna talk about that this evening. And what would they do about the mail? Because if the security person is coming upstairs, that table's gonna be gone. There's not gonna be any place for them to...
So it's like go back and do what you always did before.
That's what I, that's what I thought. And he said, well, you really didn't wanna do that. Cause it's so much easier just to drop the mail and run.
Yeah.
And not sort it, cause they haven't even been sorting it. They just leave it in the lump, and we sort it.
That's not our job.
That's a tactical factor.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what I told him. I said, that would be determined this evening, but I don't...
That's what they need.
I had kind of been holding off until the governor actually came out and, and removed us from the emergency orders that we had. Uh, he hasn't changed them any. He just extended them for another month. But nothing has changed, so we've not been any more restrictive, and the state has become less restrictive. So I see no reason not to do it all four. And if we want to go back the other way, if it's a problem, but...
With that being said, I make a motion we open all four doors on the main level. So you can tell?
Okay. We've decided to go back to all four doors open on the main level, all fares out. Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Are we gonna keep the security downstairs five days with castle?
Three.
Three days.
Three.
Which will be on primordial days, correct? Monday, Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, something like that.
It's, and I've had more complaints about especially parked up and elderly having to go all the way around, not getting a parking place. And that's why I think the more trouble that we've had, and you say that, you'll have some issues, but it's, it's very inconvenient with enough parking around the square.
So where's going back to full open? I mean, the basement doors open with the handicap accessibility as well as the four doors upstairs, which is back there.
Be normal.
To, to, to a pre-urgency conditions.
Okay.
All right. See what else I have? Sorry, those cases longer. We have several things that we need to deal with. Um, that's all I think that I have. Okay. You guys have the old business? The only other thing we have left is the easy pay, and then you get a talk... The only other thing we have left is the case each payment, they do get a talk with the fayer.
I just didn't have a chance to talk to him.
So hold off on that?
I'm sorry, I just don't have it.
Anything to do?
Well.
Sheriff's Department, got anything?
No, sir.
Correct.
Let's get through it.
See, I'm always in trouble when they do that. Randy's not here.
He's on the.
Oh, is he? He's hiding around the corner, okay. Man, I'm glad I didn't say something about him.
Come join the fray, Randy. Come join the fray. I tried to get him to come out here.
He heard all, usually if I was the domino, I'd go. Did you get a chance to look at that approach at Mansfield Bridge today?
I didn't fix it.
Oh, you fixed it, it was just washed out underneath, what's happening?
Ground holes, a lot of it.
Really?
Yeah, I wrecked them ground holes.
On the entrance, I think it was asphalt sand falling in right in the middle of the road.
That's what's dropping, it's a ground hole over the road.
Did you look at those pylons, see if they were used?
I didn't, but Butler did.
Is he okay with it?
We're going to get rid of them, maybe put some of them waste blocks there, put poles in, put your board fence up.
Okay. It'd be pretty, won't it?
No, no, probably not.
I'd picture it on that bridge. My waste block, what do you mean by that?
What is the problem?
Squirted off.
Yes.
Okay, so they'll pull it okay then? Make sure you didn't be just kind of, got a little block down there and.
No.
Broken, broken waste block, that's a waste block to me, okay. What we're talking about is on the southeast corner of Mansfield Bridge, there are pylons that come up holding the earthworks in and someone had built a fence on top of that sometime people from walking off that. It's about a thirty feet drop down to the bottom. That fence has been laid back, it's in bad shape, but it's also washed away from those pylons that are coming up from the ground. And there's that, oh, probably a three-foot gap or someone could step off of that and go most of thirty feet straight down before we get there. So Randy was looking and considering how to fix that and they talked about digging that out. Then they're putting up, the board fence he's talking about all the way up and then backfill that, so it's filled all the way up. And then if they, if the owners choose to build a fence on top of that, that's okay, we can do that, so. All right, what you got?
The first thing is the community's crossing grant, only twenty-one dash two. That's a, the paper I gave you was the estimate.
Okay.
From the milestone.
Okay.
At first, estimates, what we estimated, so they're a little higher.
Okay.
But, you know, I went off of last year's, or this year's price, so maybe trying to figure a little. And then a couple of, three of those streets and bridges are going to be more work than most of the roads has been. A lot more cleanup and there's two streets and di, or, low di, that might be double lead.
Okay.
They're in pretty bad shape.
Okay.
So it comes a million three sixty-three, five thirty-seven seventy-two.
Okay. So Cindy, tell what you need for your, your part of what you guys all do together there? Thanks. What's the deadline? What's it going to be in?
Another month.
Okay, good.
Twenty-ninth, I think it is.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-ninth, I think it is.
For media here to watch, that's eleven point six four miles, one point, almost one point four million.
Hundred thousand bucks a mile?
Over a hundred thousand bucks a mile, so.
And that's just basically overlay, that's not even building, road, that's overlay most of it.
It's overlay.
Yep.
The amount to apply for the community crossings, that's not received.
Yeah, that's what we're applying for, hopefully.
Hopefully we'll get, we'll apply every time, every year. What else you got? Oh, wow, you already did there. Were you going to talk about the graders, the leases of graders? Okay, I'll wait.
Well, not the leases, but the property tax.
Okay.
Personal property tax. And here's that, NDOT pay us too much money, we didn't spend much money, so we need to reimburse them for forty-three hundred ninety dollars and six cents.
From someplace where you spent that, haven't you, or something?
We can't do that. If you do, we won't be able to get one for that time, for sure.
All right, so what we have, we need an outcycle check to NDOT for four thousand three hundred ninety dollars and six cents to repay the, the funds that were distributed. I make a motion that we authorize that payment?
I'll second that.
All fairs out.
These be sent tomorrow if it's good.
Yeah, I'll go out.
Okay.
Now, I see Nick left, but I'm just wondering if he found out anything, if we need to go ahead and pay these personal property taxes? Or do the seven?
Nick and I have talked, if I can butt in for just a moment, Nick came to me and I work with the DLGF, Steve McKinney, he's their personal property specialist. And unfortunately, if the county were doing a capital lease, they should have filed the personal property and then they would have been exempt. However, you didn't file personal property with a.
Who, who do you?
The county.
Okay, so how do we use that?
Well, it's, it's however you signed your lease and if it was signed, the dear credit would file it. So then Steve McKinney says you, the dear credit cannot piggyback off of the exempt status of the county. So those would be owed. Now, I don't know what else Nick found out and Nick and I have been working on this, but Nick.
So we need, we need to be aware of that going forward, did the contract hand have a?
If it's a capital lease, what the county should do, and I can't file it for you because I'm the receiver, so that would be a conflict of interest, is the county, whether it be the auditor or Randy or someone, Janey, doesn't matter, would have to file personal property taxes. And then they could be exempt and you file as a non-owned, you don't own it, you're leasing it. You do a 103N, which is non-owned, saying dear credit is actually who you're leasing it off of. Then you could be exempt.
But we're stuck for this one.
You are stuck from what I'm getting from the state and I forwarded all that to Nick and we've talked several times.
The last meeting, Randy, you were here last meeting, you.
We did discuss it.
We discussed it and here's what it says exactly in the minutes. The John Dearing voice for taxes was brought back to the table. Nick Soder said after his researching emails with the state that the county will need to pay it. With the suggestion of Nick Soder, the board let the auditor's office know that they now have to go ahead and pay the bill. So the last meeting Nick told us we have to say.
But I would talk to the dear credit as going forward that you want to file as.
That's how we want to try.
You want to do the filing and then you could be an exempt.
Okay.
Okay, and, and then that takes that clear out of the equation.
All right, you've answered that.
Does that go with even businesses or only county? If I lease a piece of equipment, I didn't legally buy that, so I need to turn that in as personal property?
Well, no, generally, it depends on how your lease is written.
Okay.
And we have several, let's say, some through dear credit that aren't county-related, maybe tractors.
Yep.
What will happen is dear credit pays the taxes and then bills the lessy.
Okay.
Probably would affect if you're not exempt, we're, we're upset about that and if we're exempt, we don't have to pay. You probably get to pay one maybe.
No, it is, every state job I work on is exempt.
Is it?
Anything, yeah, and it don't make sense for me to pay taxes because the state refuses to pay me and they knock that off my bill.
That's interesting.
Anything I buy for that job, I have to buy tax exempt because basically if the state pays me, they're paying their self taxes.
That's interesting.
So I have to file tax exempt for everything anytime I'm doing a state job.
Form again.
It'll be a 103 long.
Yeah, it's crazy.
In a company, Randy, and if Janey or whomever's going to do this needs help, I'll be happy to provide them the forms. But I just can't prepare.
Keep in mind, this is all kids' fault anyway.
The assessor is a terrible person, we know this.
I've heard that before.
We know this, it's all good, but I'll be happy to help her with the forms that she will need.
Okay, what a complicated world we live in.
And then the, does Deer have to do something different with their lease?
That's what I would ask them, because I don't know on the lease side of it from, from an internal standpoint from their side. I don't know if they.
They're just going to charge you that much more to cover the cost of it anyway. That's all they want to do. It's not going to change a thing.
In my way, I think we end on that take tax.
Yeah, but they're not going to change a thing because they're going to charge us that extra bucks to cover the cost for that tax anyway.
That's a good point.
Unfortunately.
Okay, what else you got?
Barney Carroll brought me a testament on painting some bridges. West Union Bridge, the walls, sixty-five hundred dollars. Marshall Bridge, the roof, twenty-five hundred dollars. Mansfield Bridge, roof and walls, forty-two hundred dollars.
Anybody get the brick, the roof out of the cement bridge?
Oh, yeah, I haven't got testament yet.
You, you have the money to pay for it?
Oh, yeah.
I think he has, he's.
I second that.
These guys have a problem, I've seen he's working fast and for what he charges.
No, he does a, pretty good job.
We're seconded to authorize Randy going to contract with this gentleman to paint those bridges as presented on fairs out?
Right.
Okay.
And we're going to start chipping ceiling tomorrow on the Cardinal Road, one and two.
All with you?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Out from two seventy-five to Fisher Road.
Did you get that last order from me from Todd Payne, you asked him questions about that?
Yeah, I did a little bit ago, I did, didn't hear it.
Yeah, that's all it is, just asking how to do that. He, I think he was of the opinion that we were trying to sell him a, a, a job or something. I said, no, no, you only pay for materials, we're doing the work anyway. Doesn't matter to us, we put down Durverm, put down a white rock or a chip seal. We're going to put it down Durverm because it's better material that we found, it's shown itself. But we can't black, we can't chip seal over that. So if you're going to want to chip seal, that's your cause and you pay only material, we're not making a profit off. Because you're only paying for the material, then we have to put down a white rock.
He's not paying for the white rock.
Right, he's not paying, right, just, just for the difference between what you want and what we are going to do, yes. So, and you were still opinion that would be about ten thousand, is that?
Probably around that.
Okay, it's five tenths of a mile, so I don't know about that.
Almost six of it.
Okay, I thought it was six all the way to Martin, they're not going to do that section seven, seven five, but okay. So I thought about ten thousand, so. He wanted to know if there's anybody that we had done that for that he could talk to because I think he's still anxious about how it works. And so I told him that once we do that, then it's our maintenance, we inherit it, we always do.
If it's a double chip and seal, single we want.
Right, right.
Actually, you go out on the raccoon road right outside the bridge, then that is a double chip.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing, talking.
Mansfield Road.
Yeah.
It's not, it's pink red, but.
And that's ten thousand, we're talking about a double chip seal, yeah. I, I wouldn't consider it, do we ever do any single chip seals?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the blacktops.
On top blacktop, yeah, but I mean, as far as they've been.
Farther road, we have done some, but they don't last very long.
Yeah, that's why you think we didn't do those anymore. Okay.
That's why we won't maintain them afterwards.
Right, right. We'll have a hard time understanding that that's our responsibility to do. Anyway, I thought maybe I had one more thing that we do. Lee Creed did get that bridge done, I don't know if you may not look at it, about that done. He, he thought he could at least a second or third place before he shared on this.
Okay.
He was pretty good with that one. I emphasized, he spoke earlier that he was not having to do that because highway department wouldn't do it, that we'd got to clear it through you and clear it through us, that he could take that project on. That's what he chose to do and that's what he chose to do, so. I told him I appreciate it on behalf of us, he is listed as a volunteer on our, our charter with the insurance as a, as an official volunteer. You got any, Randy?
I got a couple of questions. You said you're starting Cardinal Road chip and seal?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any idea of where we're at on Jeffries support or any questions?
We're probably going to do some chipping and sealing, try to get bullshit done because they still got to make some material for paving.
Okay, it's, it's probably going to be done yet this summer or fall.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I just have people questioning.
Unless the weather.
Yeah, like you mentioned, so that's fine, if you're chipping and sealing, you might as well get it, stay on it until you're done, instead of jumping back and forth. And Jim and I first discussed earlier, I had a complaint at the end of Road eight hundred towards a life or being down that lot of gravel down there. Build up and the guy on the motorcycle about wrecked it nine or two, so. If you happen to be down that way.
Might be able to get.
If you happen to be down that way with a broom, it might be a little broom. He was also complaining about the ditch switch.
Yeah, I'll try to get the broom down there sometime.
And I know you're going to need that to places if you're blacktop and chip and seal, but if you happen to be that way and the broom's close, you may sweep that in.
Okay.
Hey Randy, has anybody turned in Hilltop Road to you? Jim, I don't know if you've seen it, down by the slab?
No, I haven't.
Oh, my goodness, and I'm not complaining, it's nothing you can do, it's an act of God. I've got pictures, there's probably about eight inches of sand that washed up about, not quite a football field length from all the flooding and so they can't come up that road and I do know the mail comes that way. I just, I go down there to play with my grandkids.
No one's called, I would have been down there.
And it did just hit me too, I had another call, Sawville, Moniz, Route one hundred and.
Pike Road?
Yeah, is that our road, Pike Road, is that city?
Part of it is.
Okay.
The very south end.
I guess right there where you pull out, it's not been hit a couple of times, it's so overgrown that.
Well, I've got it on my list to brush, but when we get there, I don't know.
I understand, I totally understand. That allows me to give him an answer, so. He was wondering if that part of it was county's or mine's.
We're up on five twenty-five west right now, he may have finished it today. Then we're going to get eight seventy-five north, get in off of that and then nine twenty-five north, there it is, off of that too.
Ten fifty up, Farnell area, open zone, he said it's down, we're about a four tenths and a half, a half mile and it'd be a stretch where you barely get one part through. You get a chance over that, see if we can cut that brush back on that. He said he called before, but.
Ten fifty.
And you go up to Graves Road, turn right on Graves Road, then.
Small, that's short, so we're dead in.
The splits, yeah, he said it's just, if you need part, somebody's got to back up if you're going to ever drive through.
Did you go down Farnell Road?
I did go down Farnell Road, yeah.
It's that way too.
Yeah, it is.
And we brushed that about ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah, you sure need to be on me, it's just, it is one line.
We're going to have to think about hiring someone to spray, I think.
Okay, we need to do something because it's sure like years like this and really.
Coxville Road, we just brushed that, what, two years ago?
But even that long?
Well, probably close to that, if you want to buy.
Maybe, if you have it all done, full done, do you full done brush?
I think they're going every day.
Yep.
And the rain, we're getting down, makes that brush really dry.
There's not many roads that are embarrassing me when I'm on them, but sometimes they are. And I understand, it's not to blame anybody, I don't think we want to blame, fortunately, you or highway department or us or wherever, I understand that. But one thousand up there, Farnell going to Rocky Fork Lake, it is just, I mean, it is just awful. Got any plans for that, making that, anything we can do with that? Is that just going to have to wait till we try to get it on the list for community crossings or anything we can do to meet? I mean, you can't, you can't put twenty miles an hour on that road.
I'm, I'm filled up for next year unless you want to trade the road or something, but.
All the driving we did, I still feel pretty comfortable with what we did.
Oh, we didn't rejoice, oh, we did, we did, we did those, yeah.
That's one of the areas, it's about, to me, it would have to be an add-on.
It would be, yeah, I don't think we can off this. Okay, I, I don't know if you had any more than that.
I would think that they peeled off of seven twenty, going up a thousand, that's the worst part of it, I thought. You know, it's rough enough, it, it'll have to be paved in order to smooth it up.
Yeah, we'll just have to hold on if we can and maybe next, next lesson maybe we can get them on. I may go a little bit down to with that kind of condition.
Seven twenty south really needs it?
Yeah.
From there, for at least from there, well, from the bridge at Palm Rock out to the county line.
We talked about it, we talked about eight hundred.
Seven seventy-five.
Several of them, we talked about it.
And there's a possibility that we can use some of those, hire some of those out. We probably need to make a new list because when we come time to spend this Rescue America money, it's been back and forth, some you can spend on roads and then you couldn't spend on roads. Then you can spend on bridges and you can spend on the approaches of the bridges, but you couldn't spend on the road. And then it was, what's the latest word, you can spend it on roads or can't spend it on roads? Why don't you hear the last?
I haven't from the new update.
They, I'm not made, we're still waiting for the definitive match, so we may have some funds available to hire those worst of the worst spots done before the next go-around of the community crossings. That's what we need to do, but we won't know that because we have to, we have to decide where we're going with that money, what's, what we can spend it on or not, but probably wouldn't hurt for us to start whenever you guys are available to start on a new list at least and so we have that list anyway in hand, so we know where we're looking at and see what the cost might be, see if we can figure what to do. do.
I came up with a list for you pretty quick.
Correct.
Probably about ten minutes.
I mean, some of them are just awful, I understand people's frustration, nobody's more frustrated about the roads situation than we are, because we live every day, they live on that road, they drive there every day, and they're frustrated, I understand that, we have seven hundred fifty miles of roads to take care of, it's frustrating, every day, and we hear about it every day, so, I suppose we should look at making a new list, if you need to do a drive, and get another list for next year, start already, so at least we have some access to funds, hundred thousand bucks a mile is nothing that seventy million bucks wouldn't fix, so we could, we could do it.
Did you get that turd loose out? I haven't.
Correct. Maybe, maybe we met the tech, we start a fundraiser for us.
Yeah, we can do that. So, law delivers its gizzards.
All right, anything else for us?
No, that's all I have.
But good evening, we do appreciate the, what you guys do, we don't, I know you can be helped by a lot of people, but don't, don't let it get to you, you guys are out every day, I tell people you're out every day, and you just can't be all places at the same time.
No, wish we could, but.
Yep.
I'd like to get them all, hey, but I'm having a little nerve to see that.
Thanks, sir.
Uh-huh, have a good evening.
You too. Any public comments for us? Yes, ma'am?
I have two things for you.
You can write it up.
I'll let Randy you watch through first.
Go ahead.
So, the, sorry to have to bring this in front of you again, but we, we need maybe a hand type check or something, so, the Oakwood grant that we did, that will support the Food Security Alliance, that we're using the community foundation as a sub-recipient, when the state sent the funds down for that grant, they sent it to the county, so we need to get it from the county ledgers to the foundation.
Okay.
So, we've identified the money, because we've been trying to track it down, Laura asked that we submit a claim for that, so Laura, do we need a approval for like a hand type check, so that you'll be able to distribute that, or?
It's a grant.
So, you're okay with doing that?
We don't do anything, Laura?
It's not with a grant.
Okay, so you can, all right, I just wanted to make sure, the second thing is, during the fair, I had a gentleman approach me that just recently moved to Park County, and he was looking for a county map that had the roads, so similar to what's in the Cover Bridge brochure, but without all the extra stuff, and when I was, just happened to be sitting next to Doug Wiseite for the chamber lunch, and he indicated the county owns a digital form of that map.
We can filter all those things off.
So, how, how can I get access to that map that perhaps we can, I mean, depending on what you guys are comfortable with, we could put a link to it on the partnership website, or at least for me to get a printable format for that, if people were to request a map like that?
Well, I, I think, I just talked to Courtney.
Okay.
And she can probably set that up on a separate link for you, how that would be, where that would be, I think she should have access, she does her websites.
Right.
So, she should have access to all of that, I don't think we need to approve that, because it is a county map, we're just talking about putting it on the county link, right, you're talking about putting it on your, on your partnership link, so, I would make that motion that we authorize you to, to work on getting that accomplished.
Okay.
Call the fair, say aye. That makes it official now, now people can pull it out, they can print it off if they want to, or whatever they want to, but it is county paid, county paid map, all those icons, all those things are added to, and filter all those things off there, so.
Right, and that's really what, and I know we've been asked about those, and like, I have that one larger township map in my office, and we use that a lot just to reference roads, so, has there ever been a contract in the past that allowed you to get those large printed maps like that? We're having difficulty finding someone that could do the large print.
We, we used to get them at the Clintonian before we had computers, that's, we had to.
Don't have the Clintonian?
I didn't know if the new Clintonian would do that.
How big?
How big?
Well, you can see that right inside my office.
Eighteen inches wide.
That's what.
Eighteen maybe, I don't know.
I could ask.
I will, I do check with rapid reductions.
Okay.
At the end of a full-size blueprints, for a lot of the, a lot of the reasons.
All right, okay, that's all I needed.
Okay, any more else about comments? They're both good here.